Good evening. I should like to call this regular meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please, for November 15th. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Here.
And Mayor Price?
Here. We do have a quorum, and the invocation this evening will be led by Major Bradley Kelsey, Travis Air Force Base Chaplain. Sir, welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you. Would you bow your heads with me for a word of prayer? Creator God, we invite you to accompany us this evening as decisions are made concerning the governance and well-being of your people. Be with us in our days of physical need and spiritual trial when we are tempted to fear, in our quest for a more just order when we are tempted to discouragement. Be with us in our encounters with the poor and needy of our community when we are tempted to grow weary, in our discussions with persons who disagree with us when we are tempted to misunderstanding. Be with us in our successes when we may be tempted to self-satisfaction. Merciful and gracious God, strengthen us on our journey of service that we may model the values of compassion and humility for all those who place their confidence in our work. We thank you for what you will do, for we ask these things in your holding you. Amen.
Amen. And the pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Councilwoman Pamela Bertani, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one another, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll begin with council reports, please. Councilwoman Panduro, would you like to begin, please?
Sure, Mayor, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's council meeting. It's so great to see a full house. I just wanted to share some great news. I attended the STA, or the Solano Transportation Authority, Awards Dinner over the last week, and City of Fairfield won two awards for our, what is it, the West Texas Gateway Project. So we won an award for that project for, under Transportation for Sustainable Communities and Project of the Year. So it was really awesome to be there, along with the mayor and our Public Works Director, Paul, to receive those awards. Also, I'm a member of Vozes Unidas, which is a nonprofit grassroots organization here in town, and every year, before COVID, they hosted the Mexican consulate over at Armio High School. And now they just changed the location. So we just had that event about a week or so ago, and they served the Latino population to receive Mexican passport cards and voter registration cards. And so not only was the consulate here, but they also provided other resources. So we brought in Olay Health, Toro was here with the oral vaccine clinic, the social services for the Solano County was here, and also Kaiser. So it was a really great event that brought in a lot of community to the resources that were provided that day. And then lastly, I just wanted to share that we had P. Escobedo Downtown Theater last weekend, and it was a packed house. I know some people were here that were there that evening, and it was great to be downtown and just see that theater so alive, with not only music, but just from people in the community from all over. So that's all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Tonison, please. Your report.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Tim?
Yeah, just real briefly, especially seeing members of the military here, thank you very much for your service. And on Friday, we had the Veterans Day Parade, which I think was not as big as July 4th, but I think was nicer for what we celebrated and everybody that showed up. So from the bottom of our hearts, I say thank you and thank you for your service. Mayor, that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Lect, Moy, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report on, I like to say how generous Fairfield is, and we all know that it is, and we're full of people who are angels. And last week, I got a call toward the end of the week from a church who had people sign up for Thanksgiving dinners to take home and cook a turkey and everything. And then, so they were set for 200 families, and the bottom line is, the people who are supposed to supply the turkeys, they pulled out at the last minute, so there were no 200 turkeys. So I started calling around, and within a day and a half, I had 200 turkeys. And I want to thank the Paradise Valley Estates, and also Sean Quinn and his son, who is the chef out there, Michael, and they were able to help us locate some turkeys. And then we have an angel, her name is Joyce Orin, and she found another 100 turkeys, and she paid for all of them. And then also, at night, after a single mother got off work, she came, excuse me, she came and dropped off six turkeys, and she said that she knew what it was like not to have food, because she had to leave a husband who was violent. And so she spent her Thanksgiving money on turkeys for other people. So I just want to say thank you and happy Thanksgiving to all of you. We have a lot to be thankful for, including, you know, Team Travis, always, you know, my whole life. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bertani, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening and taking your time to be at the city council meeting and watching from home. It's always a better meeting when we have a full gallery. So thank you for coming out. I just want to remind everyone that the Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield CAN, will be hosting a free Thanksgiving dinner on Tuesday, November 22nd. It will be at Willow Hall, and it will begin at 12:30. Anyone wanting to donate some time to come and help serve these free meals, you can meet us at Willow Hall at 10:00 a.m. on that morning, on Tuesday morning, the 22nd. And I'm extending this invitation to my colleagues up here on the dais as well, so I hope to see some of you all there on the 22nd. We'll have a full sit-down Thanksgiving dinner, and we'll also be handing out goodies, including toiletries and cell phones, thanks to the City of Fairfield, and a lot of other wonderful gifts for anyone who wants to come. We will also be providing busing to and from the event, and if anyone has any questions about that, you can call me directly. My cellphone number is 707-628-6974. 707-628-6974. I want to thank also Team Travis, who's been very instrumental in participating with the Clergy Action Network and our endeavors from the beginning. So thank you, we appreciate and love your participation. And then the last thing that I wanted to do is I wanted to share a concern from a resident of Paradise Valley that is very concerning to me, and I literally just got this today. This is addressed to me. Hi, I live in the Paradise 360 Development, next to one of Fairfield's municipal golf courses. My neighbors and I are beyond wits' end regarding the deafening jackhammer levels of noise from the gas-powered leaf blowers as early as 5:00 a.m. in violation of the city, county, and state noise ordinances. After numerous discussions with the landscapers, the police, the former director of Parks and Recreation, Michael Heather, and current director of Parks and Recreation, Christina Chamberlain, the noise is considerably worse. I was informed by Mr. Heather that the city could run leaf blowers anytime they wanted. In fact, the city is in violation of California Penal Code Section 415 and 370 to 372, Civil Code Section 3479, California Health and Safety Code 46,000, as well as the more specific city and county noise ordinances. We request the city cease and desist these illegal activities. So we need to address these concerns. And so I just read it, I mean, I won't read the rest of the letter, but it's pretty loud and clear that these residents are having to live with something that we should really be able to do something about. So, Mr. City Manager, I'm asking you to, you know, direct your staff to follow up with you and with me on this matter, so that we can get this resolved swiftly, expeditiously, and efficiently. Okay? That's my report. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Please be safe and enjoy your families. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, your report, please.
Okay. I was just, if I may, Councilwoman Bertani?
Sure.
So I think we may have received that letter a couple of weeks ago. We've already been in conversation with the resident, I think it was Mr. Honeychurch, and so we've provided him with, you know, information within the municipal code, and we've also asked our golf operator to get a couple of electric leaf blowers to try to mitigate some of the noise that's happening out there. So we've been in conversation with them.
And has there been any follow-up in terms of, have things changed?
I don't know if we've implemented them yet. Yeah, they're on order. The electric leaf blowers are on order.
Okay. So I'll just follow up with you. I want to just make sure that we get this taken care of.
That would be just fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it is always great to see a full house here. It's always better than having just a few people. I'll keep mine really short, and actually, one of the items has to do with the Paradise Valley area also. But first of all, I think this is the first official city council meeting we have with our new police chief, Dan Marshall. So, Dan, congratulations again. I know you had it. And the other thing I wanted to say is tomorrow night at 7:00, we're having a town hall meeting at Paradise Valley at the clubhouse. Am I right, Mr. City Manager? Right. And I was contacted, I want to say, a couple of months ago by a citizen who was concerned about the amount of theft that's going on up there, break-ins, and we've had some great conversations, but tomorrow night, I hope we have a good crowd there tomorrow night at the clubhouse. So that's at 7:00, so anyone who's interested, even if you don't live in the area, come on over. I know I'll be there, and I believe Councilwoman Bertani will be there, too, because we share Paradise Valley, right? All right, and that's my report for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I should like to report that the Veterans Day Parade and the concert were just absolutely magnificent, and it was so wonderful to have so many folks from Travis Air Force Base participate, and the number of veterans who attended also were very gratified with that very patriotic approach to life in the city. And then on Saturday, I was invited to go speak to the host Lions Club here in Fairfield, and this is the second time in almost 13 years that they've hosted that, and those Lions Club members came from all over the state of California. And then this morning, my council colleague and I went over to the Hilton Hotel, and it was Scott's brother who was responsible as an assessor for bringing assessors from all across these United States to the Hilton Garden Inn for a conference, and we presented Mark with a key to the city. And those folks were just so excited to be in Fairfield, and they were talking about all the wonderful things that they're discovering, including the wine industry, Jelly Belly, and of course, the golf. So that concludes my report. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Yeah, just one thing to share. On Saturday, November 26th, our Economic Development Division, in partnership with some of our other city departments, is putting on a Small Business Saturday event downtown, and so we'll have some pop-up shops, small businesses downtown from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So everybody feel free to come out and get some of your holiday shopping done, and that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there's not.
Mr. City Attorney, please, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing to report out of this evening's closed session that took place at 5:00 p.m., but in a previous closed session, the council did settle, and I can report that the case has been settled finally with a filing of a notice of dismissal in the matter of Vallejo's son and Scott Morris versus City of Fairfield, Fairfield Police Department, and Deanna Cantrell in her official capacity. The case settled for a $4,000 payment to the Vallejo's son's attorney, as well as the disclosure of certain body cam footage videos related to the case, and the case number was or is FCS 058912 out of Solano County Superior Court.
And then we'll go immediately to presentations, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, presentations. Proclamation declaring Small Business Saturday, presented by Councilmember Scott Tonison.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
If I can have Debbie Tavie come up and Jared.
Come on up. Everybody join the party. This is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is November 26, 2022. And this is Debbie Tavie and Jared from the Chamber of Commerce and Dwayne.
Lindsey Strange.
And Lindsey Strange. Lindsey, where are you from?
Valley Strong Credit Union.
Valley Strong. Whereas the City of Fairfield celebrates our local, small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy by creating jobs and preserving our community. Whereas small business employs 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and 90% of the consumers say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. Whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported that the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently-owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agreed that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that Small Business Saturday are essential to their community. Whereas communities across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, I, Mayor Harry T. Price, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of Fairfield and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And I'm going to do a presentation for, do you want to do that? Do you want to do the video? Yeah, let's do the, and Jared's got a small or short video.
Presentation.
Presentation. Are you going to do it?
I can't.
You want to?
Yeah. Do the video now? A presentation. Is that okay?
First of all, I want to thank council and mayor for allowing us to do a small presentation today to kind of kick off the small business proclamation. I'm going to go ahead and let Lindsey Strong go ahead and start off our presentation.
Good evening. It's great to be with you all. Lindsey Strange with Valley Strong Credit Union. And Jared, thank you so much for the invite tonight. You know, one thing is very clear in hearing the comments this afternoon, this evening, is that community is really at the lifeblood or at the heart of everything that we do and of your service here on the, on the council. Much like that mission, the credit union's mission is similar, to support community. And our community is made up of business owners and small businesses that really feed into the economy here locally. So Jared has a great presentation. We're happy to be sitting alongside the chamber and bringing this to life. But we at Valley Strong are here as well, as part of community now, and laying our roots deep with our newest project up in Paradise Valley on the bare piece of land where we'll build our regional headquarters that's been bare for so long, longer than I can actually remember as a small child. So thank you for having us. We're excited to be here and a part of community and a part of supporting small business. So Jared, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Lindsey. So the Fairfield Sassoon Chamber of Commerce and Valley Strong Credit Union are extremely excited to share in the release of our new Shop Where I Live Slano County website. This website will be available for all businesses throughout our community, big and small. It's also, it is also a service that is completely free of charge for chamber members, which helps to provide a strong return on investment to our membership. However, if your business, if you are a business that doesn't want to be a member of the chamber, then that's okay. For a nominal annual fee of less than $21 a month, you can have access to this site as well, which will provide you with the tools needed to help increase your sales success. There may be many, there are many benefits to having a virtual storefront, such as online sales exposure, diversity in sales channels, the ability to set pickup, delivery, or shopping options that work based on your business's comfort level and preferences, selling support from a live team assisting you throughout the process, selling products, services, events, virtual or customizable, or customizable products through the site, sync Shopify and Square web stores to allow products to import and sync inventory, sell online without listing or commission fees. There is even online training and resources to help you manage and market your shop regardless of your technical experience. In short, the Fairfield Sassoon Chamber of Commerce and Valley Strong Credit Union felt that it was important to provide a tool to help our local business community succeed and thrive for now and years to come. With that said, I'd like to go ahead and kick this off with a short little video and just introducing our new website.
I just wanted to thank the City of Fairfield for partnering on behalf of the downtown businesses. Thank you for bringing Shop, Small Business Saturday. So far, Dwayne can talk a little bit more about that, but we have over 100 vendors, pop-up businesses, and I, from what I understand, most, if not all, are from Fairfield. So we invite you to come down this Saturday after Thanksgiving. And thanks to my partner in economic development with the City of Fairfield, this happens.
I don't have more to say. Just, our city manager talked about the details of the event, but it's going to be on Texas Street, November 26, between Jefferson and Madison. So come on down, support our local businesses, and do shopping. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to, I'm going to give both proclamations, one to Jared with the chamber and one to Debbie. Madam Clerk, our next presentation, please.
Yes, proclamation declaring Native American Heritage Month, presented by Councilmember Moy and Omar Carrillo, the Director of Yocha Dehe Wintun Nation. Government Affairs is on Zoom, and I believe he'd like to say a few words when you're done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to sit here since I won't presenting, won't be presenting this physically to him since he's virtual. So I, Omar, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you. All right. So this is a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, November 2022. Whereas November is Native American Heritage Month, or as it is commonly referred to, American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month. Native American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate rich, diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, acknowledging the important contributions of Native, Native people. And whereas it is also important to educate the public about various Native American tribes, to raise awareness about the unique challenges Native people have faced historically and in the present, and the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to overcome and conquer these challenges in spite of inequitable systems. And whereas we can most effectively address the historical and continued challenges of Native people through a sustained effort to effect real change, through historical acknowledgement, honest and accurate education, visibility and inclusion of Indigenous people in our neighborhoods and communities, including public and private institutions. And whereas California has the highest number of Native Americans with a population of 757,628, comprising about 1.94% of its total population as of the 2020 census. Whereas the Sassoonis, also called the Sassoon and the People of the West Wind, were a Patwin tribe of Wintun people originating in the Sassoon Bay and Sassoon Marsh regions of Slano County. Historians estimate they lived in this region for 4,000 years. And whereas Semieto was a leader of the Sassoonis, was baptized as Francisco Slano at the San Francisco Mission, and was also known as Chief Slano, whom Slano County is named after. And whereas Sassoonis main village, and I can't say it, Yo-Yo, is located in the greater Rockville Park area and Sassoon Valley Road, where petroglyphs and acorn grinding rocks can still be found. Now, therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Fairfield, and encourage the community to learn more about the people who first called this city, county, state, and nation their home. And that is for you, Omar, and everybody in the Yocha Dehe tribe. And so I appreciate so much that our, our great clerk was able to get ahold of you and would like to ask if you have a few words.
Thank you. I come with both sides to Omar Carrillo, Director of Government Affairs at Yocha Dehe Wintun Nation. Greetings all. My name is Omar Carrillo, I'm Director of Government Affairs at Yocha Dehe Wintun Nation. The tribal council actually has their meeting today and unfortunately are unable to attend, but they were deeply honored and grateful for this recognition and for the celebration of all Native people. Happy Native American Month, and thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Omar.
Thank you. And our next presentation, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, Fairfield 101 Civic Academy graduation, and our presenter is Esther Beavers, Deputy City Clerk.
Good evening. Sorry, I thought it was on. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I just wanted to wish everybody Happy America Recycles Day. My name is Esther Beavers, and I'm the City Manager's Office Deputy City Clerk, and I want to thank everybody for having me here tonight. I'm especially excited to talk about Fairfield 101 Civic Academy and recognize our graduating class. The Fairfield 101 Civic Academy Fall '22 class began in September and was completed recently in November 9. For those of you who do not know what Fairfield 101 is, it is a 10-week interactive program designated to share how local government works. It provides residents with firsthand exposure to the inside-of-city departments and a chance to discuss current issues with community leaders. This program gives residents an opportunity to gain insight on how to become more involved at the local government level. And every two and a half hour session is dedicated to learning the ins and out of each city department. The classes are interactive, and participants get to meet city leaders, take tours, visit various city facilities, and learn about the different programs. I would like to thank all the staff who dedicated their time and energy to this program. We are very fortunate to have leaders that go above and beyond to share the great work that we do. And now I would, well, excuse me. And now we would like to recognize our Fairfield 101 Civic Academy Fall '22 class. As I read your names, please come up and pick up your certificates, and forgive me if I pronounce, mispronounce your name, but please hold your applause till the end and remain standing until everybody's names are called so we can get a group photo as well. So Anna's going to help me hand out the certificates. And I understand some of them could not attend tonight as well, so I will mail those out. So the first person is Deborah Beachtree. She might not be available. Judith Brandy, Brandis, and Frank Brandis. Inga Burton. Jennifer Coleman. Janey Davis. Scott Dowd. Dennis Foreman. Marilyn Killian. Christina Knoblock. Josie Lake. Arsenia Larson. Heather Robbins.
We're going to go down.
Carolina Sugiharto. Anna Valerio Lormer. Caroline Villarreal. Cora Williams. Cian Pha Long Wilson. Jeffrey Wilson. And Patricia Young.
And Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, our next presentation, please.
Yes, our next presentation, presentation by Colonel Garlo of Travis Air Force Base Intergovernmental Support Agreement Advancement.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for having us out here. It's, it's, it's a pleasure, as you guys noted. military. We are so blessed and lucky to have two great civilians between Mr. Campbell and Mr. Dingman, who are engaged with the community and making sure that we keep these relationships strong because they are very critical and important. So Team Travis, I am the vice for the 60th. We are the lead wing out there. We are the largest wing in Air Mobility Command by twofold, but we also have the largest Reserve Mobility Command, the 349th OC there. And then we have the 621st Contingency Response Wing. Half of them are here. They were one of the lead wings, the people that got the evacuation out of Afghanistan, led the stuff on the ground. And then we have 47 partner agencies, and that is growing. I just had a meeting yesterday about another agency that wants to come out to Travis. So we are a big base with 22,000 people that either work or live on Travis. Right? That is a massive impact to the local community. So what do we do out there? Well, we have our air refueling, the KC-10 extender, which is going away and getting replaced by the KC-46. We have the C-5, our largest aircraft, our cargo lifter, and then the C-17, another cargo lifter that is the workhorse of our airlift fleet. We also have the largest military medical center in the United States, right here outside your gate. They are here to train, prepare all of our medics if they're ever needed in wartime. And then when we're not at war, thankfully we're not, they get to serve our local veterans and families as well. And then the aeroport, one of the key aspects of Travis Air Force Base. We are the port to move things through the air on the whole West Coast. We are the gateway to the Pacific when it comes to moving cargo through the government, and not just the military, through the whole government. And that is important to understand. Our port systems and upgrades, I'll talk about a little bit in a moment. We have a lot of visitors. Nancy Pelosi, on her way to Taiwan, stopped through here. The senators on their way to Taiwan stopped through here. General Brown stopped through here just a couple months ago. You can see a list. Congressman Garamendi, he loves Travis. He is out there all the time, and we love having him out there. We'll have him out again in December. And we have the Japanese Air Force coming this week. We are a hub to bring a lot of people through. So speaking of construction impact, over the last year and the next couple of years, we have almost a half a billion dollars of construction work going on. And this is one of the biggest ones that we have. Three brand-new hangars for the new KC-46 that should be completed by the summer, and $136 million just for those hangars. We are starting in January, a $157 million, two-year runway construction project. The runway, go back, is old and needs to be repaired. We have two runways out there, so we're replacing the whole thing. It'll take a two-year project. It does not want to stay there. But that's a sign. I'll keep moving on. And we're also on about a $100 million upgrade for our port, to modernize us, to make us be able to move through all the cargo. So the gateway to the Pacific, why it were important, what's going on out there, right? The Pacific, there's a lot of turmoil going on, and things are kind of growing more uneasy between North Korea and some of the movements in China. As you probably saw on the news, the Communist Party Congressmen in October consolidated more power under the current president and an unprecedented third term, right? And increased militarization of the Western Pacific from multiple nations. And of course, our increased military and defense investment out in the Pacific as well. We're entering a period of increased risk. Why is that important? Travis is the gateway of the West Coast for the Air Force and thus the DOD to move things via the air. The only other major Air Force base is up in Seattle, and we have the bigger aeroport and are more central to move things through. So I just want to emphasize how important, right, that we have a good relationship with the community, with the city, because there's a lot of focus on the Pacific, which means there's going to be a lot of increased focus on Travis and making sure we have the resources to continue to do our mission. That makes us the big projection platform for our government, our whole of government to move things, not just for the military, again, for all the government agencies that supply aid across the world and across the Pacific. So we thank you for your trust, trusting in us. We are so excited that we were able to enter into the IGSA agreement, and thanks for all your work. We appreciate it. Thank you again for all your support. We love having you out there, so please continue to come out and spend time at Travis, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Colonel. Wonderful presentation. Thank you. And we turn now to public comments. Madam Clerk, please.
Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press *9 on your phone. If you're on Zoom, speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Sarah Cornwall of Travis Air Force Base.
Good evening. May I?
Yes.
You don't have to get that close. Okay. You can stand up straight.
I'm actually at the California Conservation Corps, just to clarify. Oh, my apologies.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. Good afternoon. I'm the Recruitment Manager with the California Conservation Corps. My name is Sarah Cornwall, and I manage our recruitment statewide. I'm here primarily tonight just to raise awareness about the CCC program. We do have a center here locally in Fairfield and job opportunities for young adults, and often find that folks don't know much about the program. And it is something that's being funded by all of our taxpayer dollars, and it's a program that's meant to benefit the community, so we want to just increase your awareness. We will also be hosting a VIP tour at our Solano Center coming up on December 7th, and I'd love to extend an invite to all of the council members, mayor, vice mayor, and your staff to join us at that event. I did provide my contact information along with some details about the California Conservation Corps that I believe you should have in front of you in a folder, so feel free to peruse that. But just to get into it, the California Conservation Corps is a government agency that provides work and training opportunities for young adults ages 18 to 25, and also military veterans through age 29. The program is designed to provide this young adult population with work experience, free training, and a community that's focused on their personal and professional development. The work that they do is all conservation-focused, whether natural resource conservation, trail building and restoration, watershed restoration, energy conservation, wildland firefighting, you name it. We have a non-residential center with immediate job openings right here in Solano, and we also have residential programs across the state with monthly enrollment opportunities. The program enrolls on a monthly basis. With immediate openings across the state, we do require incoming applicants to meet the age requirement, along with completing a background check and a drug test. However, our program's goal in the end is just to be accessible, so we are often willing to work with people to help them gain access to the benefits of the program. Once again, we'd love to invite you to our VIP tour at the center. The center in Solano is right off of Chadbourne Road, kind of down the way from the Jelly Belly Factory, and you can reach me at the contact information that's provided. Also with me today is our local recruiter, Jasmine Cook, and she is the individual that's going to be working directly with these young folks who seek to enroll, helping support them through that process, to get them into a paying job with great training opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Linda Elkins.
Hi, council members and residents of Fairfield. I'm just here to plug Adopta Street, Adopta Park, and Adopta Creek programs. I think I'm on my third contract now with Adopta Creek, and I have a goal to organize more people and cooperate with everyone at Laurel Creek, which is where I sponsor. And I feel compelled to do a much bigger cleanup. I took a drive through actually at Matthew Drive, where Laurel Creek ends and merges into McCoy Creek, and it's a mess. And so in the near future, I'm going to coordinate with Karen and hopefully get as many people to help out, because it doesn't take long. I don't know how long it's going to take, but hopefully, and maybe we can even see some council members or anybody else out to help. And the city supplies everything. We have gloves, pickers, garbage bags, et cetera. And so that's really why I'm here.
Yes, and I just want to thank Linda for her past participation in Adopta Park, Adopta Street, and Adopta Creek. She is out there almost every day.
Every day, twice a day.
Yeah, and her husband helps too, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so thank you so much. You're really a dedicated volunteer. I wish I could clone you.
Well, I think we should try to get some kind of recruiting going and all, because there's sections of Laurel Creek that are not adopted, that really need help.
That would be great.
And so I think we should get creative and start some recruiting techniques or methods to get more people out to adopt more streets and all.
Great idea.
And all city storm drains into all our creeks, and all our creeks, our watershed drains into Sassoon City and Sassoon Marsh. So we owe it to Sassoon to also clean up our garbage.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I have one other speaker, but that's for item five, and I don't see any hands raised online.
Thank you. We now turn to the Joint City Council Housing Authority Meeting. Please, Madam Clerk, if you would.
The item's on consent? Okay. I don't normally read the title for consent, but...
Please.
Should I read it?
Was there a request to speak card on this item?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Nora Dezen.
Madam Clerk, if we have a speaker, can you go ahead and read the title?
Oh, okay. I did not know that. Thank you, City Attorney. Resolution 2022-293 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield declaring that certain real properties owned by the city under Government Code Section 54221 are surplus and not necessary for the city's use. And Resolution HA 2022-09 of the Fairfield Housing Authority declaring that certain real properties owned by the Fairfield Housing Authority under Government Code Section 54221 are surplus and not necessary for the housing authority's use. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this topic. I was pretty surprised, and I guess I wasn't watching the agendas well enough before because it's on the consent calendar already, I was pretty surprised to see that these properties are being managed this way, because I think they are important to consider when you're doing a true analysis of the general plan. And also with the plan to improve the downtown, the disposition of these parcels are going to be key. In the last Planning Commission meeting, there was a member, a resident of Fairfield, who made some very, very good points, but they were simply ignored. Anyway, I request that you delay making a decision on this and allow this to be part of the study for the general plan and for the improvement of downtown Fairfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
There are no other speakers.
I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor? Madam Clerk, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Is it unanimous?
It's unanimous, yes. Thank you very much.
And regular consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And do you have any request to speak cards, Madam Clerk?
I do not.
Okay. Councilman Thompson, please.
I'd like to poll item 16 for discussion.
Item 16. You want to go ahead, Scott?
Let me read item 16 then. Resolution 2022-304 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving an amendment to Resolution 99-302 revising the structure and duties of the Fairfield Golf Advisory Board.
Good. Yeah, I just wanted to discuss it a little bit to see, I have some good relationships with the Golf Advisory Board, and I think that they're an intricate part. It's not like they are, you know, they're the board of the two biggest golf courses and nicest golf courses around, so I wanted to bring that up to the council for discussion because I know there's others that want to speak on some items too.
Is there specific questions culminating the proposed resolution changes were worked through with the GAB themselves? So if there were specific items that I can address, I'd be happy to do that.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, thank you. I'm glad that Mr. Thompson wants to talk about this. One of the things that I look for with the Golf Advisory Board is to act almost like an oversight committee. And one of the things that I'm interested in, and I think other council members are as well, is they are actually eyes-on. I would imagine somebody on the GAB is at one of both golf courses almost every day, especially when it comes to food and beverage. Staff does a great job, and I'm not looking for the Golf Advisory Board to replace staff, but what I'm looking for is they would notice a trend. Let's say you see food and beverages going down, because they'll look at the numbers. And this is where, and we had this obviously because of COVID, but then we also found out too that sometimes they weren't opening until 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning, or they were closing early. And again, it's not to find fault, but it's just more of an oversight. The parks, golf courses will be paid for this year, a couple months. There's an awful lot of money to be had, and what I would like is, I would like not for them to tell us how to spend the money, but to give suggestions.
I'll entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor? Madam Clerk, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Is it unanimous?
It's unanimous, yes. Thank you very much.
And regular consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And do you have any request to speak cards, Madam Clerk?
I do not.
Okay. Councilman Thompson, please.
I'd like to poll item 16 for discussion.
Item 16. You want to go ahead, Scott?
Let me read item 16 then. Resolution 2022-304 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving an amendment to Resolution 99-302 revising the structure and duties of the Fairfield Golf Advisory Board.
Good. Yeah, I just wanted to discuss it a little bit to see. I have some good relationships with the, with the golf advisory board, and I think that they're an intricate part. It's, it's not like they are, you know, they're, they're the board of the two biggest golf courses and nicest golf courses around, so I wanted to bring that up to the council for discussion because I know there's others that want to speak on some items too.
Is there specific questions culminating the proposed resolution changes? Were worked through with the GAB themselves? So, if there were specific items that I can address, I'd be happy to do that.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, thank you. I'm glad that Mr. Thompson wants to talk about this. One of the things that I look for with the golf advisory board is to act almost like an oversight committee. And one of the things that I'm interested in, and I think other council members are as well, is they are actually eyes-on. I would imagine somebody on the GAB is at one of both golf courses almost every day, especially when it comes to food and beverage. Staff does a great job, and I'm not looking for the golf advisory board to replace staff. But what I'm looking for is, they would notice a trend. Let's say you see food and beverages going down because they'll look at the numbers. And this is where, and we had this obviously because of COVID, but then we also found out too that sometimes they weren't opening until 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning, or they were closing early. And again, it's not to find fault, but it's just more of an oversight. Obviously, the parks or, golf courses will be paid for this year, a couple of months. There's an awful lot of money to be had, and what I would like is, I would like not for them to tell us how to spend the money, but to give suggestions because ultimately staff, staff controls what we get. But I'm very comfortable with them knowing numbers unless they're proprietary, and I don't think we have any proprietary numbers. And I didn't see that in this, in this resolution.
Okay, so, in general, operations and communication, they communicate regularly with me, and they also communicate regularly with both the manager, Jeff Perry, with Kemper, and until recently, Dan directly with SRI, and since probably the last couple of months with Lori now with SRI. So, they do have direct communication with the operators themselves as individuals and as a board. We do review whenever they meet specific ongoing issues. So, the, the way we operate right now is that they do, as you mentioned, anything that they're seeing out on the course or with respect to issues at the restaurant, they have and are receptive by the managers to receive those communications. And most certainly, I can only speak to my time with the board that I feel we have a good communication and through the chairperson in particular get regularly updates and emails that then I do communicate directly with the operators as well. And on, sorry?
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And then on the financials, when we have our regular meetings, Jeff Perry does provide the summary reports to them that includes the financials on the golf side.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure this was memorialized because it didn't look in reading it. And I think the biggest fear, as explained to myself and probably other council members, is if it's not set in black and white, that going forward, a year, two years from now, that this might be overlooked, I think was probably their biggest fear.
I'd make your pleasure to change whatever you would like. So, if that's the pleasure of the council, we can rewrite some of the language in there. By all means, yes. We primarily were updating language that was in the previous about term limits, which in December of '21, you eliminated those.
Right.
We took the opportunity to refresh and again, through the, we had several work sessions with the board members to update, and then it's to you, obviously, if there's other things that we want to include in there explicitly, we most certainly will do that.
Okay, that's, that's reasonable.
Yep. Councilwoman Bertoni, please.
Thank you. And I will just add on to my colleagues' comments regarding the golf advisory board. I personally would like to see a more robust engagement of the golf advisory board with the city council directly. I think that these assets, well, we all know that these assets are very valuable and the, and the running and maintenance of them is, is, you know, crucial for our community. So, I would like to see, you know, the golf advisory board maybe provide a semi-annual report directly to the city council on the goings-ons of our golf courses. I've, as you know, I'm a new golfer, extremely new, and I'm out there on the courses. And it's interesting to hear directly from the folks who actually engage those courses on a regular basis in terms of the running and maintenance. And so, like Councilman Tim said, the golf advisory board, number one, those folks are really truly experts almost when it comes to golfing. They know what to see, they know what to look for. So, I would like to see maybe a semi-annual report from the golf advisory board on the status of our courses, recommendations for moving forward, and allow us to engage, engage at that level because I think it is, it is of that importance. I'd also like to see, and I don't know if this is the case now, but does the golf advisory board weigh in on, for instance, major purchases at the golf courses? Not, you know, daily minor things, but when there are major, major purchases made, do they, do they weigh in on the propriety of that purchase, on options for that purchase? I'm not sure if that's part of what they do currently under the revised...
So, we recently did engage with them on the carts, doing the lease versus the purchase. So, on those significant things, yes, we do bring those before for their insights and recommendations. We have slated for our February meeting that we will be reviewing an update to our five-year recommended capital improvement. The city is going through a little bit of a transition on how we are going to be addressing CIP in general, and the golf courses will definitely be part of that process. And similar with our other advisory groups, we do provide them the overview of what the staff is recommending and asking for feedback.
And, okay, and maybe that can be a component of their semi-annual reports to the city council if we decide that that's a good idea. And also in awarding contracts, does the golf advisory board weigh in on the disposition of contracts?
They would not have that oversight, but when we go out for a new RFP or RFQ, we do have usually what we're calling like an interview committee, and there would be a representative of the GAB participating in that process, yes.
Okay. Okay, so...
And typically, that would be the chair unless that the group selects somebody among themselves.
Okay, so, you know, with the, the issues that I just mentioned, I would like to see those folded into some kind of a semi-annual report that is brought before the city council by the golf advisory board themselves so that we can interface one-on-one to make sure that we're, we're on the same page.
Regular meeting or work session? A regular meeting or work session type format?
A regular meeting before the entire city.
Right, but I mean, as a works...
Like a Measure P, exactly. Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Semi-annual. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that item? Okay. Madam Clerk, we'll then move to the next item, please.
I'm going to approve this set.
So, no approval on this item then?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Councilman...
Wait, we have to do item 16 separately, correct?
For item 16, my recommendation, we, you could just drop it, but it does leave a little ambiguity as to what happened to it. So, my recommendation would be for a motion to table item 16 and instruct staff to bring it back when they're ready to enact the suggestions from council.
I'll make that motion to table item 16 and approve the consent calendar.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, so, Councilman Tim, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And now, they need to vote on the regular consent calendar, correct?
Regular consent. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second, please? Seconded by Councilwoman Bertoni. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Let me turn now to item number 19.
Item 19, Measure P Oversight Committee Annual Report presented by Vice Chair Steve Vancel.
Good evening. I'm Steve Vancel with the Measure P Committee, and we're very proud to present our annual report to you this evening. I was assisted with our committee member, Tara Lee Martin. She gave us a lot of help. She couldn't be here this evening. We do have our committee member, Tim Tomko, who's here with us tonight. Also in our committee, we have, thank you, we have Eddie Ramirez, and we're led by Chair Chris Matthews. I want to thank very much the Finance Department. We have our new Finance Director, John Trudal, and Ashley Doyle helped us a lot. But most importantly, there were a number of city employees in the various departments that we have that coordinated through our city clerk to help get us the information for this report. So, we do thank the city employees very much for their assistance. So, what is Measure P? Measure P is a locally controlled 1% transaction and use tax. A little bit of history, it was approved back in 2012 when we were in the Great Recession. You might remember, we had to lay off about 20% of all the city employees. We cut, cut back, a lot of offices were cut back to only four days a week. We had to cut back in city services. And so, we did improve of, in 2012, a measure for five years for an extra 1% sales tax. And that was reapproved in 2018 before the original measure expired for 15 years. So, it now sunsets in 2033. And here is the language from the 2018 measure, and we in the committee do refer to this as, when we're looking at priorities for our funding and Measure P focus. Let's first start by looking at the, the revenue side. And the revenue side, this graph actually comes directly from our report. So, the numbers at the bottom are a little hard to see, but I will go through those. And on the right-hand side is our traditional sales tax, the three bars you see on the right-hand side, the blue, orange, and gray. That's what we've always had in the past, will continue in the future. This includes, it comes to us through the state, it includes state and county pools. So, it's a little complex how it's calculated, but that does come to us and it will continue to come to us. On the left-hand side, the three bars you see, that is Measure P. And so, we compared to see how close it matches, and you can see our Measure P almost doubles our traditional sales tax that we get. And in particular, this is a good year for both of these sales taxes. We get, we do get them both. They both go into the general fund. And we had, the blue is where we initially projected our revenue to come. We did, the orange is a mid-year update because we saw the revenues were very good, and the gray is the final. And for the Measure P, we received almost $26 million of revenue. And on the traditional sales tax side, it was about $30 million. Those represent 21% of the general fund on the Measure P and 25% almost on the traditional sales tax altogether. Those two represent 46% of our general fund. So, you can see our general fund is very dependent upon our sales tax revenue. Next, let's look a little bit at the spending category. And again, we go back to the language in the, in the measure that was in the 2018 ballot. We have picked several departments that we focus on, and they include Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Fire, and Police primarily. On the left-hand side is the Parks and Recreation and Public Works. We consider those as part of quality of life. And for Public Works, that includes the homeless, the HART team, the Homeless Engagement and Response Team, as well as maintaining the parks. And of course, Parks and Recreation is very broad-based. It's not just parks, it's also items such as the Adult Center, the Allen Witt Park, and also the Aquatic Park. So, those are all items that we look at as enhancing the quality of life. The next block there is Public Works, Roads and Streets. So, Public Works is actually displayed twice because they have a broad look at the city. And that was the third largest that we put money into. And then, the fourth is the Fire Department, and the last is the Police Department. So, the appropriate amounts were about $1 million, almost $2 million for Public Works and Quality of Life, $4.5 million for Public Works, Fire was about almost seven, and the Police were almost 12. But I would point out, the Police are also in many ways quality of life because that includes our PAL team and the Homeless Intervention Team that the Police Department has that were funded under Measure P. I might also add that even though it looks like the Police and Fire are the most because they are most heavily dependent upon the general fund and also the largest expenditures of the city, we actually, percentage-wise, funded more of Public Works, meeting some of their requirements using Measure P categories. So, we actually give a bigger lift to the Public Works. What I'd like to do now is to go through some of the particular departments and kind of highlight some of the activities that we had for this year that were funded by Measure P. Under Parks and Recreation, the Aquatic Complex, we logged about over 5,000 actually individual users of that complex. The Downtown Theater, after COVID, has kind of gone away a little bit. They're back to a full schedule, ran 39 shows this year. And then, the Adult Center, very important for the seniors in our community. They have run and keep running 24 social clubs to help with some senior activities. With Public Works, as we mentioned, they do help with park maintenance, and that's considered under part of Quality of Life. And we talked a little bit already about the HART team. Originally, they only had two members, I believe, but they're now up to four. And they do more than just engage the homeless, they're also very responsible for cleaning up graffiti, shopping carts, they do a lot of cleanup around the city. And they came up with a statistic of almost 3,500 cubic yards of debris that were removed during the past fiscal year. Looking at Police and Fire, and this is a place where you can kind of see some actual numbers of people that are funded by Measure P. Measure P supports the funding for 35 police officers and also six dispatches, which of course also support the Fire Department and ambulance service as well. As I mentioned, Measure P also supports the Police Activity League, and they're going into a new facility here very soon. The Police Crime Prevention Unit, and as we previously mentioned, also the Homeless Intervention Team. On the Fire Department side, based, Measure P funding supports 26 of our firefighters and fire engineers, some of the vehicle replacement. We also determined that there were over 15,000 calls of service last year for the Fire Department. And our Station 37, which is on the end of this block, actually was in the top 100 in the nation for service calls. It was ranked number 75 as the busiest in the nation. So, a lot of work that our Fire Department does here. Looking on to the Streets and Roads from Public Works. This past year, they resurfaced more than a million square feet of pavement and almost 2,000 tons of asphalt were laid down. Measure P money also helped maintain the traffic signals, the Street Seal Cult Program to extend the life of the streets. And the Public Works has been keeping track of how much they have done since Measure P started, and they are over 29 million square feet of street and road improvements. So, continuing funding of Measure P over the years has really helped our roads a lot. And kind of summarizing, Measure P is traditionally run about 20% of our general fund. This was a good year, it was actually a little over 21%. We have had years where it was more like around 18 or 19, but very good year this year. It is fully controlled by our city. As I mentioned, the other sales tax programs that come in, we get them from the state and they're, they're, there's a funding formula, I'm sure, but it's, someone else decides how much we actually get. Measure P is from transactions that happen inside our city, and that money all belongs to us, and we completely control how we spend it. And it has also been a very steady and reliable revenue source for us. By extending it to the 15 years, a couple of things that have happened. One is, we were able to maintain our city bond rating and actually upgraded it. The money that's been put into the Fire Department reinstating the Fire Prevention Program and improving some training, actually last year led us upgrade our ISO rating for the city, which causes homeowners and business owners to have reduced fire insurance. So, the fact that we have had Measure P and have had it for several years, not just the individual items we look at each year, but the length of time we've had it has been very beneficial for our city. All that being said, looking forward, I know we are doing a general plan update, the 2050 update. Measure P, as I mentioned, right now has a sunset date of 2033. So, we probably need to take a look at our long-term finances as well. If Measure P isn't extended, then you're seeing that quite a large chunk of the city's general fund is at some risk. So, it was very valuable to us during the time of the recession. It's been helpful for some of the extra nice things we wanted now that the economy has been good. But I think, I guess the message to you was, take a long-term look at our Measure P program. It's been helpful for us now, but we want to make sure that we put it in a bigger context of things. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, real quick, Steve, thank you very much for that report. I know myself and some of my colleagues up here were there in 2012, and Measure P was on the ballot, and how desperately we needed it because things were not looking good. And, you know, and I know, we, a lot of us walked door-to-door, just like we were campaigning for, you know, a seat. It's kind of easier in a way to do that because we really needed it bad, and I think a lot of the people really understood that. So thank you very much. And yeah, we definitely need to look into a long-term program for this, so thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues? Exceedingly well done, Steve. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank your colleagues for us too, please.
And Mayor, I just wanted to mention that there is a 10-page report also that I will get a copy to each of you. And on our website, if you go to fairfield.ca.gov/measurep, the brochure that's out in the lobby on the table will be on that page of the website, and also the 10-page report. Thank you.
And do we, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
I do not.
Okay, we will then move on to public hearings, please. Item number 20, please.
Item 20, public hearing and second reading of ordinance 2022-14 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield repealing and replacing Chapter 5 of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, also known as the Building and Housing Code of the City of Fairfield, adopting by reference Title 24 of the 2022 California Code of Regulations, known collectively as the California Building Standards Code, respectively Part 2 California Building Code, Part 2.5 California Residential Building Code, Part 3 California Electrical Code, Part 4 California Mechanical Code, Part 5 California Plumbing Code, Part 6 California Energy Code, Part 8 California Historical Building Code, Part 9 California Fire Code as amended in Chapter 8 of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, Part 10 California Existing Building Code, Part 11 California Green Building Standards Code, CalGreen Code, Part 12 California Reference Standards Code, and also adopting the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and supplementary secondary references. And our presenter is Jeff Thomas, our chief building official.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thanks for having me. I won't rehash everything too much that we discussed last time. I will just highlight a couple of the building standards codes amendments that will be going into effect that will affect residential construction after January 1st, and that's the increased energy standards that we'll all experience. One is that now, energy storage systems will be required, infrastructure for it for all new construction, as well as they're taking their first step towards creating a no-gas state and requiring any new construction, it does install gas appliances, they also have to wire it for electricity for future connections. With that, I would really like to take a moment in, in the spirit of Thanksgiving to thank my staff. These code changes have really increased our permit submittals over the last month. We anticipate over a 200% increase in residential home submittals alone during November and December. We have already experienced almost 100 new permit submittals over the last few weeks. So I really want to thank my staff. There's been a number of them that have come forward, requesting to work overtime to try to maintain our services to the community, especially with the staffing challenges that not only our department, but the construction industry as a whole has been experiencing over the last few years. So I really want to thank my staff from the bottom of my heart for their extra work. Thank you. With that, I ask that you please adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Any comments or questions before I open it for public comments, please? Okay, any public comments, Madam Clerk?
I do notice there's one hand raised online. I don't have any speaker cards, though.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, can you open the public hearing?
I'm going to open the public hearing now, yes.
And Jake or Valeria, could you bring the speaker on? Is that for item 20?
Dr. Bonney, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, staff, and fellow Fairfield citizens. My name is Dr. Bonnie Hamilton. I've practiced medicine and lived in Fairfield for the past 30 years. Tonight, I am asking the council to consider instituting reach codes in our city building code update to require all electric appliances in new construction. Climate change is a global problem, but on a local level, we can influence its two top drivers, greenhouse gas emissions from transportation and buildings. Every three years, cities and counties can adopt local reach codes in line with the new California Building Standards Code, and may adopt building codes more advanced than those requiring by the state. These are known as reach codes. In other words, cities may choose to adopt municipal codes, amendments that transcend the building code cycle. Reach codes are an opportunity to advance homes that are safer, cleaner, and more affordable. And through these reach codes, our city can take rapid action on climate without waiting for state and regional actions. Buildings are a big contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, representing about one quarter of all emissions, so we need to act quickly to make sure new buildings do not produce more emissions. The benefits of greenhouse gas-free electricity can best be realized by electrification of new and existing buildings and transportation vehicles. Building greenhouse gas emissions come mostly from using natural gas as a fuel, especially for space and water heating. Electrification transitions buildings and vehicles away from natural gas and gasoline to clean renewable energy. To avoid increasing emissions, we can build all electric buildings that use readily available high-efficiency electric heat pump, water, and space heaters, induction cooktops, and other electric equipment and appliances. All electric buildings are safer and healthier to live in, along with being cost-effective, especially when adopted at the new construction stage. For new buildings, builders and homeowners can save money because electrical appliances cost less to install and operate than their gas-powered equivalents. Plus, electric appliances avoid the indoor air quality health risks that come with using gas appliances. I'm particularly concerned about the association between the use of gas appliances, indoor nitrogen dioxide levels, and asthma, especially in children. I'm happy to provide resources. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I wish you all a safe and healthy holiday season.
Thank you, Doctor.
I'm happy to speak to that a little bit. You know, while I agree that there are certainly methods that could be instituted to help address, you know, our climate change, it has to be a balance between, you know, the cost of construction and affordability of homes. We are in a housing crisis in this state, and while we will eventually be moving there, it is a jurisdiction, if we move too fast, too quickly, it's going to increase the cost of construction to an unaffordable level, and we as a city may be pricing out a number of our residents to be able to afford these new homes. The state is taking these things into consideration and systematically creating these changes that will, over time, be able to be absorbed within the construction costs more affordably. So I would recommend that the city not entertain any reach codes at this time.
Any comments, colleagues? Entertain a motion then to approve, unless there are any other speakers.
No other speakers.
Public hearing, anybody else want to speak on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back for council discussion and our action. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, I don't agree with, I don't disagree with Dr. Hamilton, but California is leading. I mean, we're, we're getting there. We can't, where do we get the electricity from? We have power safety shut-offs all the time. And like I said, in a perfect world, absolutely the doctor is right, but I also agree with staff is that you're going to, we have, what, probably 17, 1800 homes under construction coming. That would stop it dead in the tracks. Because I think what she's asking, unless I misunderstood, is that she wants us to adopt the stricter code going forward in January.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. And, you know, speaking with the electrification issues, I mean, we as a city, among many other jurisdictions in the state, are experiencing many difficulties by PG&E not energizing the construction that we have currently. I have about a half a dozen projects that have reached out to me to request my flexibility to allow them to connect to temporary generators to open to operate, to name a couple, Popeyes and BMW, as well as potentially One Lake Apartments, have also been pushed off from their electrification dates to an unknown date.
And this is what's generating then the conversation over microgrids for the, for the City of Fairfield, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like I said, I agree with her, but it's too draconian at this, this point in time for me, so, thank you.
Any other public comments? Close the public hearing, bring it back for council action, please. Entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance. Been moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second, please? Seconded by Councilman Tonison. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Item 21, public hearing and second reading of ordinance 2022-15 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield repealing and replacing Chapter 8 Fire Prevention Code of the Fairfield City Code, adopting by reference California Code of Regulations, Title 24, Part 9, known as the 2022 California Fire Code with amendments to reflect local conditions and adopting by reference certain provisions of the 2021 International Fire Code. That was it. And our presenter is Stephen Conti, our fire marshal.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Happy holidays to everyone. Before I ask for your approval in this second reading, I'd just like to highlight a couple of our accomplishments this past year. With public works, we oversaw help oversee over 1,300 acres being abated that continues to lead the way to make our city safer day in and day out. We completed over 1,685 annual fire and life safety inspections throughout our city and businesses. And we, as state mandated, Senate Bill 1205 mandates that all apartments, lodging houses, hotel motels, and private and public schools are inspected annually, and we are with it, are complete, have completed, and are 100% compliant this year. So this effort is definitely not on mine, it's with the team behind me, and I'd like to ask you and everyone here in attendance tonight to give them a round of applause. They make our city safer every single day. Thank you. That's all I have. I just, thank you.
Any comments or questions before I open the public hearing? Excellent presentation. I will open the public hearing. Do we have any questions to speak, cards, Madam Clerk?
No, I do not.
Seeing that, I will close the public hearing, bring it back for council action, please. Entertain a motion to approve, been moved by Councilwoman Britannia, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Good job.
Well done.
Item 22, public hearing and resolution 2022-306 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the engineer's report and assessment diagram contained therein regarding the annexation of territory designated as annexation number eight, logistics center at Fairfield to the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 17, Chadborn Beck Cordelia, and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto commencing with fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and resolution 2022-307 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield declaring the results of a property owner protest ballot proceeding for the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 17, Chadborn Beck Cordelia, annexation number eight, logistics center at Fairfield, and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto commencing fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and resolution 2022-308 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield ordering the annexation of territory logistics center, logistics center at Fairfield to the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 17, Chadborn Beck Cordelia, designation as annexation number eight, and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto commencing fiscal year 2023 to 2024. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, Public Works Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you tonight is annexation number eight for Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 17, Chadborn Beck Cordelia. The territory proposed for annexation is located north of Cordelia Road and east of Beck Avenue, and once constructed, the development will be a warehousing/distribution/light manufacturing building. City Council initiated the annexation process for this territory on September 20th with the adoption of resolution numbers 2022-251 through 2022-255. And by conducting the public hearing tonight, carrying out the ballot procedure, and adopting the proposed resolutions before you, council will complete the annexation process and the territory will be added to the district. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Chris? Any public speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, I do not have any.
I will open the public hearing, seeing none. Close the public hearing, bring it back for council action, please. Entertain a motion to approve, been moved by Councilwoman.
And just by process, you need to first approve resolution 2022-306.
Okay, that went first, okay. Okay, been moved by Councilwoman Andoro, second, please. Councilman Tonison, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Return to the next one.
Okay, and now I will open the ballot. It says, yes, I do approve of the proposed maximum assessment for my property shown above and the annual inflation, inflation adjustment applicable to future assessments based on the annual percentage change. It's a little different than normal ballots, but it's a yes vote.
Any comments or questions? Entertain a motion then to approve? Been moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second, please?
And just, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the council at its pleasure could make a motion to approve resolution 2022-307 and 2022-308 in one motion. Is that your desire, or is that your motion?
Okay.
All right.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 23, public hearing and resolution 2022-309 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield annexing territory logistics center at Fairfield to Community Facilities District Number 2012-2 Public Safety Services Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance as annexation number 61 authorizing the levy of a special tax within the annexed territory and submitting the levy of a special tax to the qualified electors thereof. And resolution 2022-310 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield declaring the results of a special annexation election and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2012-2 Public Safety Services Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance determining the validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lien for City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2 Public Safety Services Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, annexation number 61 Logistics Center at Fairfield. And again, our presenter is Chris Lewis.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Before you tonight is annexation number 61 for CFD 2012-2. This district provides funding for public safety services, open space maintenance, and park maintenance throughout the city. The territory proposed for annexation is the same that was referenced in the previous agenda item. The parcel was subject to both districts. City Council initiated this annexation process for this territory on September 20th with the adoption of resolution 2022-255. And by conducting the public hearing tonight, carrying out the ballot procedure, and adopting the proposed resolutions before you, council will complete the annexation process and the territory will be added to the district. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Chris? Okay, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers, Madam Clerk?
No requests to speak.
No requests. Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve.
And the first motion, just to verify, should be to approve resolution 2022-309?
So moved.
So moved. By Councilwoman Britannia, is there a second, please? Councilman Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll open the ballot. Our city, our deputy city clerk said we have two ballots. They appear to be exactly the same, but I'm supposed to open each. And there are, yes, 56 yes votes in favor of annexation. And I'll open the second one just to make sure it's, I think it's a duplicate. Yes, 56 votes in favor of annexation.
Entertain a motion to approve.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is a motion to approve resolution 2022-30, 310, excuse me.
310, okay. Motion to approve, Councilwoman Andoro. It was a move and a second by Councilman Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And there is no other business before us. We are adjourned until December 6th. So thank you very much for being with us, and have a bountiful, safe Thanksgiving. Good night.